The Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance. All right, if I could get a motion to accept tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that was that, and we move right into, I don't know, did we want to rearrange order?
Yes, we should.
All right, so we're going to jump to item 3.3, introduction of Irvington Booster Club. I'd like to let Dr. Harrison welcome our guests.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask Mr. McCormick to head towards the mic in the back as well. You know, we always talk about what an amazing community Irvington is, and tremendous supportive groups and partners, and we think of the PTSA, we think of the Education Foundation, we think of our partnership with the Village and Cab, and so many other organizations. And we're in one area that where we continually saw that we're a bit disjointed, and we knew we had tremendous talent and interest to support us was in the area of athletics. So we started a conversation already, how long, would you say?
Two and a half years ago.
Yeah, it's ongoing. And it really came down to not just us wanting to have a booster club, it came down to the right people wanting to step forward, and the people that wanted to take ownership and had the level of passion to be able to lead and organize so much in and around our athletic program. So we are so pleased and grateful to the folks that are going to be introduced tonight that have stepped forward and have founded the Irvington Bulldog Booster Club. So, Mr. McCormick.
Thank you. It has been a long time in the making, and I know a number of people in this room have been involved in some of those steps. And really what it is, is it's an opportunity for us to, you know, pool our resources. We had a number of different teams and programs that had their parents organizing fundraising for them. And really, as we put it out there, we thought it'd be best to try to get everybody on the same page with one club. And it really started with a group of people talking about different ways in which we could get this off the ground. And it was at the end of last year, at the end of last school year, where I put out a survey to the community, one to get feedback on the value of a general booster club, and then the second one, which is even the more important one, who wants to step forward and take on the work that's involved in the booster club. We put the survey out, and we had people rank where they saw themselves and what else they could contribute to the club. And out of that survey, I was able to call the people who really had the most interest in taking on different positions within the club. And when I brought them all together in August, it's probably then that they really found out what they were going to be doing. So nobody left the room, they all stayed. And this is a great group of people who have really spent a lot of time. And I know I'm preaching to the choir when I say there is not a lot that you may get out of this financially, but it's a tremendous amount of time, and we've had meetings pretty much on a weekly basis. And the turnout has been great, the enthusiasm has been terrific. And they've done a lot of work to get things up and running. And there's been a lot of conversations that have been had with members of teams, coaches, players, and parents to help establish what we're doing here. I'm going to turn it over to one of the co-presidents, Jack Maskone, who has handed out to the board a timeline of things that have taken place this year and plans for the future as we move forward. I'm excited to work with this group of people. I know, as I've talked to my colleagues in other schools, they have continued to tell me the benefits of a general booster club, what it means to the community in terms of resources, what it means to the community in terms of overall spirit that it brings to your programs, and all the benefits that they see from this type of organization. And what I'm most pleased with is the amount of time and effort that's been put into this that's been, you know, really met with enthusiasm and a tremendous amount of planning. So with that, I'm going to turn over.
I was just going to say, as you transition and as Jack comes on to speak, why don't you come up right over here?
Okay.
Bring the mic and stand, in the stand, and just come right over to the side. Bring the stand, too. Thanks, Artie.
Hi. Thanks, Artie. So, you know, what we did here is we essentially tried to summarize some of the work we've done to date, kind of on a milestone basis. But maybe it would be helpful first to just make note of everyone on the board. Myself and Jason Velez are serving as co-presidents. I think there's a good balance there. Jason has younger kids, so there'll be a nice transition for my definite transition period over time. Mike Krieger is our treasurer, Lori Green's the secretary, and then we have a number of vice presidents under various categories. Several of the folks are here tonight. Tara Steinberg, Vice President of Events. Susan Daley for Communications. Stephanie Tuckett for Merchandising. Amy Anacarico and Jen Stein for Concessions. And then we've worked very closely with Artie and Dave Cohen, who's not here. But, and they've been, you know, invaluable in terms of giving us guidance from the school's perspective, and also, quite frankly, some legacy context. Because some of the cross-currents within the community had to be kept into consideration as we rolled this out, which is not a bad thing. But if we didn't have that continuity of advice, it would have been probably a little bit more difficult. So, as you can see, as I've laid out, you know, one of the important things we had to do, one of the most public-facing things with respect to what we're doing is essentially revamping the way the concessions were being handled on campus for the various athletic activities. And I think, you know, the history is one of very good intentions, but it was a bit ad hoc, and there was no standardization, not only with respect to how the money was raised, but more importantly, how it was spent. And so without dwelling on that too much, one of the most important things that we're trying to do is create protocol and transparency around that function, not only with respect to the concessions, which we hope someday will be a small part of what we do in terms of fundraising, but, you know, other aspects of what we think we can do. We can talk about that in a little bit. The spending side of it, I'll get to at the end. But similarly, we want to have process, we want to have a set of standards, and we want to sort of make it, not necessarily consistent across the board, but subject to review and, you know, frankly, voting. That reflects sort of a consideration of a lot of different things, not only which team was on the field when the money was raised at the concessions. That's hardly what we're shooting for. So, we kind of did a lot of work around that in September and October. Believe it or not, homecoming took up an inordinate amount of time. And it wasn't only with respect to the execution of homecoming, but it was also with respect to, what's the right way to put it, undoing past practices. And doing it in a way that was sensitive to, like I said, the good intentions of those folks, but by the same token, taking an opportunity to make a hard break on some of the things that we wanted to discontinue. So, a lot of behind-the-scenes work was done within the community on that front. We have worked with pro bono organization. So we now have legal representation, or we've been working with Winston &amp; Strawn out of New York to create our nonprofit status, our incorporated status, our 501(c)(3) status. It's been a lot. Because we're pro bono, we're not at the front of the line a lot, so the turnaround time's a little long. But we're pretty far along. And once we have our bylaws finalized, which the Winston &amp; Strawn folks are also advising us on, then they'll take that and, in conjunction with what we've already done in terms of certification, we'll have, we expect to have 501(c)(3) status by the end of the, certainly by early spring. And so at that point, even though it's, I won't bore you with the tax stuff, but it's retroactive for 24 months, so anyone who donates can certainly expect to be able to deduct it, although I don't know what it means now with the new tax legislation, to be fair.
Donation's charitable given still.
Yeah, yeah. So, but we'll be certified in that regard as well. So, that's actually been a pain in the neck and a little daunting for me. I do a little volunteer work around the community, but I've never been on file with Albany and a number of different organizations. So, you know, Michael and I and Jason have that status to proclaim, so. And then, you know, when the basketball and wrestling seasons began, you know, there's those season starting tournaments, the Warnock and Tewey Basketball Tournaments. We did all the concessions work there. Sue Daley and a group really were amazing in terms of the wrestling tournament, you know, mainly because it was essentially scheduled, canceled at the last second because of the weather, and then rescheduled over the holiday, which was, you know, very inconvenient in terms of getting people to come out. But that went off very well. So I think we're reasonably well-institutionalized with respect to that stuff. And again, I don't think from a financial standpoint, it's that big a deal. I mean, it's obviously, we have a very explicit report on what's going on. But it's more signaling with respect to, like I said, process, transparency, accountability. You know, every dollar in is recorded, which is exactly the way it should be. The other thing we've done through 2017 is establish the initial protocol for how the money will be spent. Now, what we need to do is get more money. But we've laid out, and that's attached in the back of this little rear four-sheet thing that I put together. But essentially, we've laid out a series of guidelines. And what we're doing is we want to work through the coaches. We want the coaches to be the ones that are driving the spending requests. And that's for a number of reasons. But at the end of the day, we want the money that gets spent to go towards the programs that are affected that can benefit from it. And we want to de-emphasize or eliminate, maybe, the notion of people and property, whether they're warmups or heightened jerseys, or whatever the case may be, or defraying the costs of team dinners, all that stuff. We want to get that out of the spending protocol, and we want the spending to be oriented towards making the athletic programs better, to contemplate those issues that are not captured within the budget. And then hopefully, as we grow our resources, to do things that maybe are a bit more expansive with respect to leadership seminars, you know, bringing in speakers, whatever the case may be. But we started by, and then someday maybe endowing a scholarship or something, which would be great. But that's down the road. We started by creating a set of guidelines for the coaches that Jason and I spent some time with them to just essentially say, here's the type of stuff we're looking for, and here's the type of stuff we won't likely approve. And we made it also clear that while we're not going to defer, and we're not permitted to be as part of the athletic department, but we're not going to consider anything that doesn't have the athletic director's approval. So essentially, we're mandating that the coaches work through the athletic director to identify those things they think are worthwhile that are outside the budget, that aren't likely to be within the budget. So Artie has the best view on that. And then once we have his endorsement, we take it under consideration. And we set up some guidelines for how we'll handle smaller versus bigger items. But, you know, at the end of the day, I think for this to have long-term success, you have to have buy-in from the coaches. The coaches have to work constructively with the athletic director. And then it'll be the booster club's role to take that input and determine, to the extent those requests are warranted, to, obviously, to fund them. Or maybe find a middle ground where we fund a little less or a little differently, as the case may be. The only exception with all this, and to be fair, we've only had, what, one formal request so far? Pretty de minimis, an iPad or whatever, a camera tripod holder. But the only thing we've said with respect to kids and property is we will make exceptions formally for need-based requests. So if there is a team that's getting privately funded warm-up gear, but there's one kid or whatever, for whatever reason, doesn't have the resources, if the coach wants to submit that request, we will take that into consideration. But that's the only exception for that thought process. And then, the last thing I would point you to, going back to that cover sheet, is sort of the things that if by the end of the school year we get them done, we'll feel like we've laid a pretty solid foundation for going forward. So the first thing is we need to get those bylaws adopted so we can finalize our 501(c)(3) status. And also, you know, we need to have the bylaws like any organization to make real decisions. We have to have a foundation that we can point to from a legal standpoint. We're in the process of conducting parent outreach, which is essentially more of an educational thing than anything else. The discussion will not be about, "Parents, tell us what you want us to spend money on." It'll be making them aware of the same sort of things I just talked about with respect to the philosophy behind how we want to spend the money. And then also making them equally aware that we look for that input from the coaches through the athletic director. You know, one of the things we were careful to make very clear upfront was that we're not involved with anything having to do that falls under the purview of the athletic director. So, we don't care if your kid's not getting enough playing time. We don't care who that coach is or who that other coach is. But it's important, I think, for the parents to hear that more than once, and other than just in an email. Because, again, this is about setting up what we think will be a long-term foundation and a system that can resonate within the community. I mean, the good news is there's so many people that have reached out and offered to help. So, it's really us not being ready to accept all the helps that's been offered. But soon we will be, I think. The other things, we're going to start when we're ready, soon. Raising money in the form of like a membership drive. So we're going to figure out a good price point for, "I'm an Irvington Bulldog Booster Club member. I'm a gold member." I don't know, we haven't figured it all out. You get a bumper sticker, maybe you get a seat cushion. But maybe we'll tier the prices. You know, we're thinking somewhere between $50 and $100 for a membership. And then, you know, like I said, I think we can get this up, you know, where the concessions is a small part of the ultimate fundraising capability. Right now, it's our only fundraising. And then the other thing we're working on, and Tara's taking the lead on this, is we do want to have a large fundraiser this spring. And so more to follow on that. But, you know, we have some interesting ideas, and hopefully we'll get that off the ground. We'd like to have a website up and running before the end of the year. There's some considerations, we know with that, with respect to school policy and whatnot. So, we're working with that in mind, but we think we can do that. And obviously, that facilitates more than just communications. That can give us the ability to sell merchandise over time, and, you know, get the word out a little differently. And what we also hope will be something that I doubt we'll tap into this year, but ultimately, which is alumni donations from outside the Irvington community. And then the final thing is we need to be set up to be audited by the end of the year. So, it's our goal to be in a position to be audited. We're not yet there from a systems and infrastructure standpoint. But, you know, when we get to that point, we'll probably work closely with, whether it's the PTSA or whatever, to make sure we're, you know, managing costs in the right audit firm and whatnot. That's been drilled into my head many times by Winston &amp; Strawn, that you're going to be audited, you're going to be audited. So that, I think, is the high point. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, open it up to, I see Deb looking like she might be ready with a question.
Deb was in the lines then, she was back there.
My daughter would say, "What a squad." This is something. So firstly, thank you. This is about as exciting as it's gotten around here for a long time, in my opinion, in my humble opinion. So, thank you. I know how much goes into this in terms of going to Costco and setting up at an early morning hour and schlepping the merchandise from there and back in your car. So, it's a lot of work, but it's much appreciated, and it's long overdue. And I think this is really exciting for the future of Irvington Athletics as well as the school. My only question I had in looking at this is when the form is attached in the back, and it indicates that you can submit a request, can somebody other than a coach submit a request to the booster club?
We are not, we're set up not for it only to be the coaches right now. We're not married to, I mean, we've had one request. It was literally for a tripod for a camera. So I expect we'll get more. The idea behind it, though, again, was to de-emphasize sort of the, you know, we want it to be on behalf of the program, outside the budget, but, you know, that type of thing. I certainly think we could figure out maybe some different ways to take input. But we definitely want to make it, you know, I think at the end of the day, the people that are in the best position to know what's needed for the athletic program, not necessarily from one day to the next, but over seasons and years, are the coaches and the athletic directors. So we want to embed them in that process. But to the extent we had other requests, I'm sure we can figure out a way to do it.
That's great.
But it's not currently contemplated.
Gotcha. And lastly, with respect to the gear that the kids like to wear on the teams, is that going to be left to the individual team to privately, so to speak, fundraise for?
Yeah.
And then leave it up to each individual coach, whether they want to order clothing or not?
Exactly. And, you know, our view on private fundraising is as long as it's not on the school grounds, and it's appropriate. We don't have a view on whether it's appropriate or not. As long as it's not on the school grounds, you know, it's not ours to be responsible for. Yeah.
I just want, I'm sorry, we actually, because people watch it later. If you want to just run up to the mic, that would be great. And just, and Amy, just for the, say your name, so people can.
Okay, Amy Anacarico. On the wardrobe-ing, the whole, you know, spirit wear, we are thinking of coming up with some sort of mainstream way that everybody can order something with the same logo, the same colors, something where people are not just going on a website and, "Oh, I want this," with this written on it, and kind of having a way to keep that organized and controlled. But yeah, yeah, from a school store, right. And it maybe may go through our website, where they can go to our website and click on it, and we'll work with another site.
Which is great, because not every student is on a team. So that would enable them to get the spirit and be part of your organization.
Yes, and they can have a logo, it can have a soccer, you know, whatever they play, or it could just have a bulldog. So, we're working on that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from the trustees?
I have a question, it's probably more for Carol, but you were mentioning the, in terms of improving the way in which concessions in the store, et cetera, will be more transparent. That's one thing that we always get hit on on the audit, is that it's trouble, it's difficult to have control. So is this hopefully an improvement for us? In terms of, it's not the district itself. Right, so in terms of it pulls it out of the district sphere?
Yep. And I think they have a, they have different standards for accounting purposes.
I mean, to be clear, this is simple stuff. What did we spend on the food? What did we take in? Cash management? We have a little physical security protocol, so the cash doesn't lie in the box for three days, stuff like that.
Exactly, but that's the kind of thing that has been a challenge, so thank you for taking that on.
Just want to add, I'm thrilled to hear about the apparel and other items that the kids can buy, because it always upset me that the kids, unless you played a sport, you didn't have anything that showed any kind of school spirit. And this year, homecoming, I've been to many homecoming games throughout the years. And this year, hands down, all of the games from Wednesday through the weekend, we had such crowds. And I know you guys just started September, but kudos, because it was a great homecoming. A lot of kids, a lot of spirit, and I think it's great. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very, very much.
Very good, all right.
That is really cool.
It is cool.
It's so cool.
You don't have to stay.
But you can.
Bye, everybody.
You're welcome to.
Run while you can.
Really very cool.
Mrs. Daley, you need to stay.
Yeah, yeah.
How did Stephanie get off from not having to come? Fishy, fishy, fishy.
Thank you again. So, we will now move to district updates and news, again to Dr. Harrison.
So, good evening once again, and happy new year. Certainly, Mother Nature arrived with a bang between the cold, the snow, and the wind. It was quite a challenge. I want to really give a special thank you to Gary Knowles and the entire custodial staff, who really braved those temperatures and that wind to keep our grounds clean. And it's just a little factoid that they were literally out until 2:00 in the afternoon, removing ice and blowing snow. And just kind of a reminder for the board and the full school community that our school calendar has built in four emergency closure days, or snow days. And we just used two, but Carol actually had to remind me that we actually had the emergency closure in September because of the safety concern in the community. So we should keep in mind that we have one remaining snow day, and know that I'm going to be stingy and giving that day away. But if necessary, we would have to give back, as noted on the calendar that was approved by the board last March, is that May 25th, which is the Friday before Memorial Weekend, would become an instructional day. And then if we exceed that, we would push back the end of the school year one day to the 26th, which is as rating day, which is normally a staff-only day. And if we were to exceed that, we're going to have to get creative and look to modify vacation schedules in other ways. And just as we're thinking about the complexities of this year's calendar, we're starting the process of building next year's calendar, which is sure to be a complicated process to align with a whole series of state standards. Some that are commissioner regulations, and others that are in a variety of different state laws that have been kind of merged, and school districts are being promised they're going to be held accountable for them. So as a result, we're going to look at some potential shifts in some of the things that we've experienced in the past. And then further complicating that is that our fine commissioner of education came out with a proposal that would actually look to streamline the process, that you would have a required 180 days and a certain number of hours of instruction. And that would make it much more simplistic in how it's done in most other states. But what, that's a great idea in and to itself. However, it's still, even if the Board of Regents approves it, then you still have all the state statute to attend to. So we'll see where that goes, but in the meantime, we are planning with the laws that are in the books today. As we've mentioned in this room before, and may come up again in some of the committee reports, we're striving to actually begin to increase our feedback loops with the community. And doing so, we have a goal of after spring break, or I'm sorry, winter break, of having, of launching a community-based survey. And the industry says it's like a climate survey, kind of how we doing, to get some feedback and on public perception, staff perception, and student perception. When we say students, secondary kids, to get some feedback and to have that become a part of a regular cycle for the school district. We'll be looking to do that and potentially expand surveys in that level of feedback in future for similar purpose, to be able to benchmark and to see where we're seeing some improvement in some areas where we may need growth, but also to explore other areas. One other area that we may be looking at in this next survey, as discussed in this room, would be exploring the area of facility needs, or some things related to food services as well. We're partnering with a national research group called K-12 Insight. And they're going to work with us to develop the survey throughout the next month. And then they will collect and organize and analyze the data for us. And then ultimately, we'll come in this spring and give a public presentation on the results of the survey. And then, one of our plans for coming years is for them to actually come in and workshop the administration on how we start to put that type of data to work for us. So, a lot of exciting stuff to come, but I want to start putting the word out there. And it is, we'll have a great communication plan to make sure that you'll receive the message probably about 10 times in 10 different ways. But you should be looking for a survey come end of February. I also just want to say that there are just so many exciting school events going on. I always say to, you know, keep an eye to school and district communications in the Facebook page. There's so many things on the horizon. The one thing to highlight, for example, the school bases this Thursday, is the High School's Annual Curriculum Night, which is a good opportunity for parents of incoming students to be able to gain insight into the comprehensive program that we afford our kids here in Irvington. But also to keep an eye to our partner organizations, whether it's the PTSA, the Ed Foundation, because they're promoting a lot of great events, if you didn't see already. The Ed Foundation, who has been such a great partner with the school district in supporting mediation labs in the schools. They are hosting a community-based, I'm sorry, what did I say, mediation?
Yeah. That's something in the back of your mind.
You know what? If you're meditating, you'll be able to mediate more effectively. But a community-based mindful mediation session.
I signed up for 12:15.
Yes. So, time slots are going fast. It's going to be on the 27th here on the campus. So if you're interested, hit the IEF website if you haven't gotten the communication, and be sure to sign up. Finally, from me, at the next board meeting, we will welcome our administrative team that's going to be joining us for our annual Board Administration Roundtable. Our administrators are going to be... Our administrators are going to give some updates on their work in the schools and foreshadow some of their needs for the coming years. So that will be, as always, a nice conversation that we all look forward to.
Dr. Corr, anything to mention?
Not really. I said we've had like two days back, it just hasn't happened, not that much has happened. No, next week, I guess is, no, this week we'll have our delayed opening. I, actually, we missed our Administrative Council meeting on Thursday, so I don't know what every school is doing yet. Main Street will be working with Jesse Lebinsky on some technology, and at Dows Lane they'll be continuing their work of ELA, so more to come for middle school and high school. You know, the delayed openings, just as a reminder, are two-hour delayed in each building, and therefore every school starts at a different time. So it's not a day where we do a lot of joint work because each school has a different start time for teachers to get there, as well as this school day to start for kids. It is our whole superintendent's days that are so valuable because that's when we get to do a lot of K-12 work, or at least K-5 and 612 work. So, we do appreciate this couple of hours, though, that are happening on a regular basis.
Thank you. Carol?
Okay, I'll just update you on the, right now we're in the middle of a child nutrition three-year annual audit from SED. So it's actually the federal program, but they make the state do the audits. So it's every three years we get audited. This is really for compliance with the free and reduced lunch requirements, that you have a little bit of paperwork. It's also making sure that your menus follow their healthy standards and their portion control and their menu diversity and all that good stuff, purchasing regulation. So it's been a lot of fun in the last two months to fill out all their forms, and then they actually come in February, so we're getting ready for that. That's just happening behind the scenes. Mostly right now I'm working on budget preparation, doing analysis, looking at, you know, looking to lay the groundwork for formulating the budget. There's a lot of particular areas, it all has to come together. It's, there's a lot of missing pieces right now, so it's still very all over the place, but every day I work on something and hopefully get, make a dent in it.
A lot, a lot of that information comes in late January and February.
Is, is starting to come through now, so we're, you know, putting the piece, I can make projections and put placeholders where I need to, then update what I do. We spend a lot of time right now with facilities, looking at that, because that takes a lot of time to really put it together in terms of, you know, Gary has to get cost estimates, and some of them, you know, are better than others, but he actually has people come and look at what we're asking and create some quotes for us, so that the projections are meaningful for us. And then I'm looking at all the revenue pieces, because that's another piece. So, really, you know, the revenue drives the expenditures, so that is a key piece for us. And it's probably the most difficult to predict right now, so I'm looking a lot at the revenue piece of it. And then the last thing I'd report on is that, you know, today we had a deadline for architects to submit proposals to us, and I have, I'm happy to report that four firms applied and sent proposals. So the next step for that will be the Buildings and Grounds Committee to review them. At the meeting, we'll probably invite either all of them or some of them to interview. And hopefully, we will be able to appoint somebody next, in the February board meeting, to start the process with us. And really, they're just on board with us, so as we develop our projects, they can help ground us. They can guide us with some cost estimates, with, you know, ultimately the design of what we're looking to do. So that's kind of encouraging that we had four, four firms. Of course, one of them is our existing firm right now.
This is similar to having someone we use for legal, or the bank we use, or the, you know, all the different.
Right, so you're not tied to cost, you're tied more to its professional service, so you can take a look at value, qualifications, their criteria, their work that they've submitted, in terms of, you can review a lot of different things. You're not tied by cost here.
Were they local, or are they?
Two of them are local. One is our existing firm, and the other one is, they're all local, the other three are local.
The decision is made by the administrative team, or how?
We'd make a recommendation to the Board of Education, but it's going to be a process with the Buildings and Grounds.
So with B&amp;G, okay.
And so, really, in some, so we're certainly looking forward to that. And, you know, when we think about Carol speaking to budget, it's crazy to think a month from now, we're going to be talking budget in this room. So it's going to be here before we know it.
I'll be on vacation first, and then.
Yes.
I just had a question about the, with the calendar, you both have referenced it. I think one other thing that's sort of been referenced other times, but just previewing it, we're also, you're continuing to look at ways to optimize the professional development times with the.
Yeah, so, so the one conversation that we've had before, I don't know, I think Raina referenced it at the last board meeting before break in our, our presentation. But many, many areas, school districts have a regular reoccurring early release time that provides for additional work time, and by doing that, we think we certainly have that opportunity of maximizing that experience, to have our teachers work with curriculum, to have a lot of collaboration that can happen within a school building. So the board should anticipate a proposal that would have some new additions to it on that front.
Can I make a suggestion? You earlier reported about how we've already used three of our building snow days. Perhaps each building principal might just want to give parents a heads up that there's one left and what the protocol is, just as a reminder. So, we lose some snow days, it's kind of not a surprise.
The plane tickets purchased, they know in advance?
That's a good suggestion, thank you.
Great, okay, well, thank you very much for those updates. We'll move to committee reports, and we had our Curriculum Committee just on the day of our meeting last month, so we gave an update there. I don't know if Buildings and Grounds like to.
Well, Carol sort of.
Stole the thunder.
Gave the Buildings and Grounds update, because the only thing we were going to talk about was that RFP had gone out, and today was the day for the responses, and so maybe we've got full responses. We continue to pile ahead with B&amp;G projects.
Okay. Very good. How about, it looks like policy, we'll, we'll be talking about policy in just a few minutes as well, but is there anything you want to preview before we get to?
Nope, just working through the policies and updating them and as fast as we can, right?
As fast as time will.
Great, so, do you want to do the communications, or either way? Or, maybe, I don't know if you were there?
No, I wasn't.
Oh, I wasn't there, so I'll do it. Unless, Maura, you want to?
Go ahead.
Okay, so we talked about three, three items at our communications meeting, which was December 15th. One, our continued work on overhauling the district website. Again, we're planning to unveil the whole of the website, the district and the school pages in the spring. And so, behind the scenes, our Director of Technology, along with Donna Friedlander, who works with Dr. Harrison, are working to organize and train people. We are coordinating with School Wires, which is the company that is doing the work of building the website. And we will come up with a communications plan as well as we near that time of unveiling the website to make sure that everyone, students, staff, and parents, community are aware and about, about the new website. We also discussed, there's, this is sort of a deep school kind of conversation. We have a group called the Lower Hudson Educational Council, is that right?
Coalition.
Coalition, that combines a number of counties, school districts, together to do advocacy with, when it comes to legislation, so it gives our region some more leverage. And it's going through a transition, so there's been some vision work to reimagine that work. And so as it, there is a plan as they come together with what that new vision is to share that out to school districts, so hopefully when I look at the next few months. And then we talked about revising our district newsletter, and it was very impressive. Dr. Harrison has two binders that have district newsletters that go back several decades, so it was interesting to see the continuity and the changes. But twice a year, we come out with a newsletter that's sent to every mailbox. I think anybody who wants to know about what's happening in the district, it's a great read, but unfortunately, a lot of people never notice it in their mailbox. So, what we want to do is make sure when it comes in your mailbox, you notice it and take a chance to read it. So we're looking at sort of revising the look so that it's more approachable when it comes into everyone's mailbox, that they, they do take the time to read it. So that's what we're doing. Yes, sir.
There would be a great place for that, the website.
Yeah.
Can I ask why it's taking so long?
Well, before, the unveiling was going to be first the district and then the school websites, and then because of the delays at the end of the year, which messed up the opportunity to do the training unveil. It kind of shifted everything. Yeah.
Thank you.
Michael, the only other update I could give you is for the Governance Handbook.
Yes.
Just so everybody else is.
Yes, please.
So, I went through the draft of the Governance Handbook and compared it to five policies in particular that were pointed out by legal counsel.
The headline is, is that we, we shared the handbook with our, our legal service, and they tried to reconcile it with our policy, and so that's what you're.
Yes, so, so it would, it came, the comments came back that there were five policies that we needed to look at to make sure that our handbook was not in conflict with the policies. Some, some, some of them were just little, little changes that had to be made in the policy. Some of it was a little change that had to be made in the handbook, but again, it's one of those tedious things where I did read all the policies, I went through the handbook again, and I reconciled them. So I'm at a point where I think we can make recommendations to change the policy, so we'll probably have to bring it back to the Policy Committee at some stage to see if they're in agreement. But I didn't think that any, any of legal's counsel's suggestions were anything that's going to take us too much time.
It's just, it's just a matter of reconciling it.
Just a matter of reconciling it and making sure. I had to read through both, though, to understand their comments, so it's not going to be a lot of work.
Yeah, but.
We'll be in good shape by another meeting or two to present that.
And the Governance Handbook, again, is something that is new, that really puts in writing our practice as a board and our roles on the board. So it's a great document for us to guide our work and then anybody in the community to understand the role, whether just because you're coming to a board meeting, or even maybe anticipate one day being on the board. It's really helpful to understand how we work. So we're excited to get to the finish line on that.
Yep.
Did you want to share anything about, were you at the cab? Was there any highlights?
From this morning?
The Community Advisory Board?
I should have brought that little sheet of paper with me. Yes. There were various announcements made this morning from different groups. One thing that has come up that there's still no resolution is, there is a group, Safe Rides, a committee that is run by the students. That falls under, which many people might not be aware of, under the Boys, Boy Scouts. And they, well, they support the program, most importantly, with their insurance, so the program can run. Boy Scouts Club of America, that has been pulled from their insurance. So, the chairs have been working with the village, the village attorney, the insurance company. They're really trying to figure out how to get this up and going. It has not run at all this year because of the SNAFU with the insurance. So, they're working really hard, they were disappointed, they really didn't have any answers or, you know, anything to report back to the group, other than they're still working on it. It's been a bit of a challenge.
What about the Girl Scouts?
Yes, how about the Girls? The Girl Scouts has proven more flexible as an organization, right?
Yeah.
But the Community Advisory Board, again, the Community Advisory Board, again, works as a coalition of different groups within the school district and village to help promote conversation, safe decision-making for teens. So the Safe Ride is a way for teens, no questions asked, to get a ride home at night, so that's a shame if it's not running.
Yeah, so it's been a bit of a challenge for them. And actually, and Allison Felix, who's one of the chairs, along with Tanya Hunt, also reported to the group today that they want to start some sort of outreach with Puerto Rico, with what had happened there. They feel like it's, you know, it's still 50% of the, that, that island has no electricity. And there's been some fundraising within the district for certain things, specifically at Dows Lane. There's a parent here in Irvington that is very involved. And Allison has been speaking with her, and they're kind of, she, she was kind of gauging from the group what, you know, what the interest was, you know, who wants to get involved, and kind of brainstorming some ideas. But I guess pretty much it was decided that Allison was going to go back to this parent and have more of a focus, like, you know, if there's a particular elementary school we could support, or if there's a particular community, something very specific, rather than let's just raise some money globally, you know, for the island, but, you know, very, a specific target, a specific need, and this community come together and fundraise, however that looks, whether it's, you know, tangible, you know, tangible items, whatever is needed to help support the people of Puerto Rico. And that was really, it was a shortish meeting today.
If I could say one thing, since Tanya's here, I thought the last mailing that went out to, that I received was very effective. That was from your organization, wasn't it?
I asked.
I asked, yeah, I thought it was very good. I don't know if you guys all got it, but it was the one trying to remind parents about hosting and the legal liability connected to it.
Thank you. So, I just had, we, because of the many other things on our plate, I was interested to hear where we stand with Food Service and Wellness Committee. We have an item, in fact, on our consent agenda later, but we could use the opportunity now to sort of get a sense of where Food Service Wellness Committee is at, and.
So Wellness was supposed to have met on Thursday. Wellness was supposed to have met on Thursday, and that was canceled, so we've rescheduled it now, I believe, for the 18th of January. That's, should be going out. Where, that's our introductory meeting. We're going to be introducing four new community members that applied to be on the committee. We're going to be updating them on all the things that have gone on in the past. I'm going to be going over the survey that we've done in the past, the presentation we made last year about all the wellness activities that we're doing. So we're going to be basically starting up again a little bit. The focus this year will be, you know, primarily looking at all the different wellness activities, seeing what the group wants to work on, and then we do have the RFP for food services this year coming up. That will be also part of the focus, to make sure there's some involvement with the Wellness Committee in terms of what should be in the bid packet for that. To that end, we have a consultant that we will be using, and that is what I'm recommending in the agenda tonight, is to award a contract to the same consultant we used five years ago that did this, and has been ongoing, actually for no charge for the remaining years, has been helping us through any other extensions and things like that. So it's HMB Consultants. They are primarily the ones that everyone uses, they're like the experts in this. It is a huge document like this thick in terms of what has to be included. It's very intensive with child nutrition, SED requirements, so it's not something I have the expertise to handle at all. So, you know, unfortunately, and I, I mean, I suppose I could if I had absolutely lots of time, but I just don't. So that is really something we should have a consultant do. You would, you will save the money that we pay for the consultant in the amount that they are able to get in terms of the bid prices and things like that. But we also have an opportunity there to incorporate some of the ideas that the committees had the last couple of years in terms of maybe putting a better product out for the community. So that's the exciting part right now, going forward.
Great, great. And so you mentioned there was a survey, and then I guess one thing that maybe is a little under the surface, but with discussions about changing the high school master schedule, there's been talk about the lunch schedule changing and the impact that would have, so that would be part of the conversation.
That would be part of the specs in terms of what we would be putting out, that there's this probability, I won't say, you know, definite, because it's, you know, when you put a spec out, but the probability, and that they would have to be, the food service vendor that we choose would have to be creative in terms of alternate locations and kiosks and things like that, so that we could accommodate all of the students for a lunch period.
Right, it'd be a new vision in terms of how that's delivered.
That would all be part of the specs, so that's, that's again why I want an experienced consultant, because there are other schools that do this. It's not, we're not the first ones to do this type of block scheduling, so there are others that do that, so.
Good, thank you. Okay, so with that, we're going to jump ahead to comments from members of the community. If there are any members who would like to, participants here would like to ask a question or make a comment, please, we've now moved the mic up here, I don't know if you want to move it back. Should I move it back?
But it's only a couple people here.
All right. And so if you could just introduce yourself, and we ask that you keep your comment or questions to three minutes, and if you have direct questions to myself.
Okay. First, Happy New Year, everyone, and thank you for allowing us to comment every time I come, so I appreciate that. I have two questions, actually. Dr., or, Michael, Dr. Harrison spoke about the survey that's going out in February to support community outreach and whatnot, and at the past meeting, there was some discussion about early foreign language. Will there be a survey sent out to the community? Will there be a survey sent out to the community about early foreign language, and it's the community's desire for early foreign language? I know, you know, we did that, but is the district looking to do that independently?
I think the short version is, we're still developing the survey, we haven't got to that stage yet, so.
Just trying to keep the excitement about early foreign language going. And then, I guess, for the Curriculum Committee, so I know you haven't met since the last time we met, but is there an alliance between the Curriculum Committee and the district to discuss the commitment that the district exhibited in the last meeting for early foreign language?
I could say, in terms of the Curriculum Committee, we, in a prior meeting, shared our priorities, so we're still, I don't know if we're able to pull that up, I could.
Okay, so that's not being added, then, I guess, is what I'm wondering.
It's from our, yeah, I guess, it would, I would have to, I could send it to you, but we, in our, I don't know if it would be at this one, we have, we listed our priorities, which unfortunately, I don't have in front of me, but consent to you, and that's really where we're at right now.
Okay, so that's not changing or anything?
Well, we're going to get those items first, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, so, next, we're on to policies, so, we have printouts of the?
No, so, I want to apologize, and apologize to Doreen as well, because this was my misdirection, or didn't catch that, the policies, we have two policies that are up for our first reading that are minor edits, but they were not posted in public contents, we'll make that correction tomorrow morning, but I accept responsibility for not catching that. But, there are two policies, and I can certainly defer to the committee to speak to them, but there's two phases to our policy work. One is the overall overhaul of our policy manual, which includes every policy that exists, several hundred policies, but then, as there are changes in law or regulation that affect our business and our policies today, we have to go back and make some adjustments to policies. So, there were two policies where there were suggested edits that came from New York School Boards Association Policy Division, and I don't know if the committee wants to speak to it, or I would be glad to, your call.
In terms of the changes?
There's two, two policy, yes.
Yeah, I personally, because I was working on the handbook, I only have the executive session notations.
That's fine, so, I can speak, so, one policy is 2160, School District Officer Employee Code of Ethics. There is a recommendation for an addition of a single sentence, talking about confidential information, and matters that are discussed in executive session should remain in executive session unless the board acting as a whole made to decide to disclose such information where disclosure is not prohibited under law. And then, similarly, in another policy, it was 2160, my screen is frozen. There you go, 2330 relates to executive session, so you see the linkage between the two of them, the same phrase was added, and then additionally, a statement that is recommended, individual board members acting on their own shall not disclose matters discussed in executive session, however the board acting as a whole may, and so on. The board may vote to go into executive session, shall be detailed enough to allow the public to understand the topic the board will be discussing. So, for example, for public information, you just, we just can't simply, the board can't simply say, just a motion to go into executive session, you need to clarify, as we historically do, we're going into executive session to discuss matters pertaining to the employment of particular persons, or there's a list of categories that are acceptable for executive session, so the board has the obligation to disclose that when we move, when they move for exec session. So, if the board has any questions of that, please filter them back to me and to the Policy Committee, otherwise, at the next regular board meeting, these would appear on the agenda as action items.
So, you don't want the comments now, in an email?
Certainly, if there's a question or comment, that can be made.
One is a question, the other one is a comment. Regarding policy 2330 about executive sessions, at the end, it says, minutes shall be made available to the public within one week from the date of the executive session. Can those minutes be made public before a board approves them?
Typically, well, the minutes we, so, it's actually a great point, that there are rarely any conclusive minutes, other than the open and close of an executive session, because the matters are permissibly excluded from public information. So, when we look at any of the minutes, it would be limited to the, for the reason for the motion, and the time that you entered, and then the adjournment, so there would be no actual content. So, I think that's an excellent question, though, about the timing, because it should certainly align with the approval of our minutes.
Yeah, so, that might be something to look into. And the first suggested area in red, to go into executive session, shall be detailed enough to allow the public to understand why we're going into executive session. Those words give me a little concern, detailed enough, because one could argue, you're not giving enough details. Would the committee consider changing the language to say, because right above it, you list eight different reasons why, so maybe instead, refer to those, you know, we'll go into executive session, you know, with the above-mentioned, you know, one through eight, you know, just because I could see someone wordsmithing and picking at these words and saying, this isn't detailed enough, and you are being very detailed right above that, so maybe reference that?
Yeah, aforementioned.
Right.
So, prior just to making any recommendations to the committee and the board for edits, what I will do is I'll reach out to our representative at school boards, as well as our own legal counsel, just to make sure those adjustments are above board.
Okay, any other comments or questions related to these policies? Excellent. So, next, we go into, can I get a motion to accept our consent agenda for tonight?
Second.
David and Brian, thank you. Are there any questions related to any of the items before we approve, or vote, rather, for the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good, we jump ahead a few pages. We do have one additional opportunity for community comments or questions regarding the school districts. Seeing note takers, I will share that our next, are there any final comments, or, yes, go ahead, David.
I just want to, just my two cents for what it's worth, in regards to the foreign language piece. I just want to urge us as a board, and administration, and the community to really take a real deeper look at what, you know, when the community comes forward as thoroughly and as impressively as they have, and really feel like it's our responsibility to take a deeper dive into that than we have. So, just, you know, just my two cents.
Yeah, absolutely, and we got a great letter the other day that we responded to, and I think there's been a lot of constructive conversation, as Dr. Corr shared, that she's speaking with instructional leaders and looking at it from that lens right now, so. Point taken. So, our next meeting will be January 23rd, we mentioned that it'll include a roundtable with our administrators.
Just clarify?
I'm sorry, if I call up to the mic, sure, I'll give you a shot there.
Mr. President, thank you for mentioning the letter of response.
Could you just mention your name?
My name is Lorraine Temporino, and just for the record, that the letter that we received as a response was very ambiguous, and unfortunately, it did not provide any type of sense that there was any decision or anything that was going to be made, so I appreciate Mr. Graber for bringing up that topic again, and for really making it count that we are, we are very interested, and we are interested in seeing this happening, and for us to see much more, something closer of a timeframe in which these things can move forward, rather than just a response acknowledging that we have been listened, and that nothing else is, that is not part of a priority for the board at the time. So, we would like to see perhaps more concrete steps forward on that regard. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I would just add that in the letter that was shared, it presented a number of different items that have been discussed with the administration, and so, those are all, I thought, great for consideration, and I think that's where we're at at this point. So, our next meeting, again, is January 23rd, here in the campus presentation room at 7:30.
Matters pertaining negotiations.
Yes, so, I'd like to get a.
Pending litigation.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to move into executive session for matters pertaining to negotiations and legal matters, can I get a?
So, moved.
A second, okay, from Maura. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll take maybe five minutes for a little break, and then.